Now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board of Ashwabnan Board Meeting to order for Tuesday, May 25th. Roll call, please. President Mary Kardowski. Here. Trustee Gary Paul.
Here.
Steve Kubaki, trustee Steve Kubaki, trustee Chris Zerbal, and Jay Krieger are all excused. Trustee Allison Williams.
Here.
And trustee Tracy Flukie.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
Flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for what stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just.
And please remember, men and women throughout the world in uniform. Everybody has the amended agenda. I need an action on the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, action on the open and closed minutes from April 27th, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. They're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named. And board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody here who would like to discuss items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Written communications or announcements. We have the letter on the federal stimulus funds. Joel, I'll let you take that.
That particular letter was issued to us by the Realtors Association of Northeastern Wisconsin, just indicating that they have programs and services that may be eligible to be recipients of some of the funding that local municipalities have received as a result of ARPA. Now, there are a number of both for-profit, like Realtors Association, or nonprofit agencies that are clamoring for pieces of that financial pie, if you will. So anytime we get correspondence or communications, we will forward those onto the board for consideration. At this point in time, we are still working to finalize or formalize a recommendation to the board in consideration of ARPA funds. So no action necessarily needed, other than acceptance.
Okay.
Move to approve and place on file.
Uh, I'd like to make a comment on one.
We need a second.
Pardon?
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before you comment on it. Tracy, move to approve and place on file, so I need a second.
I'll second it, but I thought that was just for information.
We needed an action on the, um.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and discussion. Gary. On that letter, any discussion on the letter?
On the letter, okay.
No, no discussion on that. You said that you had a question.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I gotta catch up to you. I'd like to make one thing on the food truck rally. Rex, the crowd was unbelievable. We had more people at the rally than the Packers had in the stadium of all 2020. You did a great job, Rex. The crowd, the crowd was like there was a parade coming through the park that lasted like three hours, and you couldn't find a parking spot. And the beer was good.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the letter to receive and place on file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number eight, action on consent agenda. A, action on operators licenses. B, investment policy update. C, investment report. D, budgeted expenditures. And E, department reports. The only thing I wanted to say about the investment policy update is that that was just changed the language in there because of the clerk treasurer position changing. That's the only reason, that's the only difference. So, anybody have anything that they'd like to say, or would you like to pull anything out, or I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine, public hearing. Public hearing regarding ordinance 05-1-21 rezoning 1680 Grant Street, parcel VA-L202-2 from R1-1 family residence to R2-2 family residence. Erin.
Okay, as indicated on the screen in the public hearing notice, the requested public hearing is for a rezoning of parcel VA-L202-2 in the far southwestern portion of the village along Grant Street. Just for a point of clarification, at this point, we are receiving public comment tonight. However, there will be no action taken on the rezoning, because the developer did request that the project be delayed while he reviews some additional financials for the project. So Plan Commission did table their action at their respective meeting. So the public hearing will just be to take public comment this evening with no action taken. In terms of the project, the requested rezoning is for the Three Put Meadows subdivision plan, which is to consist of 60 units of 30 duplexes. So if you can picture 30 duplexes with 60 units, of course, all of which are to be owner-occupied for new development in this area. To facilitate the development of the property, as the duplex units, it would have to be rezoned from R1-1 family residence to R2-2 family residence. The public hearing this evening is to take public comment on that request.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody who'd like to speak for or against this item? Is there anybody who'd like to speak for or against this item? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, number 10, action items. 10A, action on the annual renewal of a conditional use permit for home occupation in the R2 zoning district located at 2090 Marley Lane. Erin.
This is a annual renewal of a conditional use permit for a in-home daycare, state licensed in-home daycare. Under our code, any home occupation within a duplex unit is required to have an annual renewal of the conditional use permit. This particular home occupation has been ongoing since prior to my time with the village. There have been no complaints, no violations at the property.
Erin, is there any, are the neighbors notified that the permit is coming up? Is that part of the process?
That was part of the original process. This is just the renewal. And if there are any complaints, we note those. But to date, there have been no complaints over the four years I've been here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the 2090 Marley Lane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. 10B, action regarding requested site plan review for T-Bake &amp; Barbecue, 2052 Holmgren Way, parcel VA-473. Erin.
The site plan review before you is because the property is within the sports entertainment district that is subject to review by Plan Commission and ultimately review and action by the village board. T-Bake &amp; Barbecue at the corner of Borvan and Holmgren, as you can see up on the screen, is currently in the building and operating successfully. They do currently have dumpsters located outside of the building, because the previous location where the dumpsters were used is being used for the smoker, as well as storage for the adjacent property owner. The request is to add an 8x20 dumpster enclosure. It'd be on the south side of the, if you can picture, the red and white building that fronts on Borvan. There is a door right here to the red and white building that will remain open, so the dumpster enclosure will not infringe on the door at all. Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission did recommend approval. At both Site Plan Review and Plan Commission, there was one no vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Actually, I should mention the recommended conditions of approval. Dumpster gates remain closed except during loading/unloading of refuse. Privacy slats are to remain in good condition. Broken slats are to be replaced as soon as possible. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Otherwise, Tom Bacon of T-Bake &amp; Barbecue is also in the audience. You have questions for him?
Any comments, any questions?
As Erin said, that was in front of the Site Plan Committee. I was the no vote. I was the no vote because we do have a sports entertainment district, and that is definitely not the direction we want to go in. I know Tom has got a problem there with enclosing those dumpsters. Does look bad. It's better than nothing. So I, tonight, will go along with Tom. I hope he can do better in the future to put those dumpsters behind the building rather than in the front of the building, which is what he is doing right now. And that is not what we're looking for in a district that we're trying to improve, so. Tom, I'll go along with you tonight. I wish you good luck. I'll move to approve if there's no other questions.
With conditions? With conditions, Gary?
Oh, with the conditions, staff conditions, yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions for the Site Plan Review for parcel VA-473. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10C, action on appeal of denied operator's license, Donald Trader. Okay, chief.
This was originally reviewed. I gave a denial based on our guidelines, which was a felony conviction, which is an automatic disqualifier. That was really the only reason for the denial. His felony conviction was back in 1996, so.
Okay. Okay, I know that Mr. Trader is in the audience. If anybody would like to hear from him, or else I'll entertain any thoughts, comments?
This came to Public Works and I did agree, you know, it was long enough ago, we did grant the appeal. So I'll make a motion to grant Mr. Trader his liquor license.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that. I believe he is due for a second chance. Any screw-ups, it's over with again, so keep a clean record.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant the appeal of the denied operator's license for Mr. Donald Trader. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, 10D, action on appeal of denied operator's license, Jillian Stitman. Chief.
Was a similar review. However, the felony drug conviction was much sooner, back in 2009. I think there was one in 2012. But again, this was for a felony drug conviction and an automatic disqualifier.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments?
Like the chief said, it was brought up in front of us. We wrote it 3 to 1. Allison and I are on that committee. We did go, I think I was the no vote on that, but Allison, I'll make you the decision-maker on this one.
You were the yes vote. You were a yes vote.
I was the what, yes vote?
Oh, yeah.
You were the no.
Tracy, do you have any questions?
All right, all right.
I was just wondering what the discussion was at your committee, that you decided to go ahead with the approval.
Okay, all right, I guess that was a yes vote on that. I will again approve this as a yes vote. One screw-up and you're done again.
I'll second it, and then I can exit.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, but to answer Tracy's question, I will, I was there, but I'll let Allison answer.
Yeah, Mrs. Stitman had mentioned, you know, the conviction was a while back. She has recently, I believe it was a couple of years ago, gotten in an accident and is permanently disabled, and this is a job that she can do that works around her disability and is able to provide for her family. So kind of has turned her life around, and again, with the conviction being further back, we felt comfortable at that time. Is that, Mary, is that what you remember?
Yeah, it's been, the conviction was in 2007, so it was 14 years, so. Anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10E, consider or discuss act on dangerous dog order appeal by Robert Hudson for cane. Okay, Tony.
All right, this matter is before the board tonight as a result of a recommendation from the Public Works and Protection Committee after having a hearing on Ashwabnan Public Safety's declaration of Robert Hudson's dog, Kane, being declared dangerous based upon the village's ordinance. That basis by Ashwabnan Public Safety was as a result of the city of Green Bay's order that the dog was declared dangerous back in July of 2018. As a result, Mr. Hudson has the right to appeal that decision by Ashwabnan Public Safety or that order. That would result in a hearing in front of the Public Works and Protection Committee, which did occur earlier this month on May 4th. At that point, each side has the opportunity to present their side or evidence and documents. The committee heard this matter and listened to both Ashwabnan Public Safety as well as Mr. Hudson. Record was established, which includes the various documents that are included in your packet, which include the initial declaration by Public Safety, Mr. Hudson's appeal letter, a transcript of the hearing, which just a note that one of the Public Works and Protection Committee members was referred to as Joyce Euclid. That is actually Joanne, so correction will need to be made in that regard. But nevertheless, transcript of the hearing is included, as well as a variety of documents that Mr. Hudson produced during the meeting, and a copy of our ordinance, as well as an email from Ms. Techmeyer concerning the original incident leading to the city of Green Bay's declaration. All those items are documents in your packet that consist of the record that was presented and established at the hearing in front of Public Works and Protection. This issue is in front of you tonight to make a decision on the recommendation from the Public Works and Protection Committee as to whether approve or deny that recommendation from the committee. This matter essentially cannot be retried or re-litigated in front of the board tonight, because the hearing has already taken place, and to do otherwise would create issues as far as the procedural nature that is required by our ordinance in due process. So as a result, I would recommend that the board not entertain letting anyone speak tonight to ensure that the decision the board makes on that recommendation from the committee is only based upon the record that was established at the Public Works and Protection Committee meeting. And so with that being said, I'll take any other questions that the board may have.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a moment, a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to deny Mr. Hudson's appeal and uphold the Ashwabnan Public Safety order.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny Mr. Hudson's appeal and uphold Ashwabnan Public Safety's order. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
No.
Motion carried. Thank you. 10F, review and action regarding 2021 refuse truck quotes. Mr. Martin.
Yes, good evening, everybody. As part of this year's budget, we had $285,000 budgeted for replacement of one of the refuse trucks in Public Works. As many of you have heard in the news, for vehicles, any type of vehicle, and it's extending to garbage trucks, to anything else, there's a long lead time, a long delivery time on vehicles due to some of the various parts in them. And experienced it with this, with this quote also. We got four quotes out of five possible vendors, ranging from just over 265,000 to just shy of 280,000 on vehicles. There was only one vehicle that actually met all the specifications and the timeframe listed in the contract, and that was a Heil truck, and it's considered ready-made. And what that means is that the chassis of the truck is already on the floor, and it wasn't declared or wasn't taken by anybody yet. And we'd be able to put our name on it and get it within the 150-day period. The rest of the trucks were one year at best, and we had one of the vendors that was honest with us and said there, there are 1,800 trucks in the hole right now. So they couldn't even give us a date, and that's why you see a lower cost. And for that amount of time, that time is money, as you know, and any repairs would far outweigh that cost savings. So the reason, that's the reason why we're making the recommendation to go with the Heil refuse truck for $279,896. Went through Public Works and Protection at the May 4th meeting. That was their recommendation to village board, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Doug, is your name still on it yet?
We've only given them a verbal at this point. We said we couldn't give them anything official until after this meeting, so if it makes it through this meeting, I'm placing a phone call.
Let's get her done.
Pretty, pretty quickly.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the refuse truck from Heil, 279-896. Any more discussion?
Nice second, quick question. Doug, do we have any other Heils, or is this the first one?
We have two other Heils, and we have one New Way. The newest one we got last year was a New Way. The two previous are Heils. Both, both come highly recommended from the mechanics, from the operators, so we don't have an issue going with them. We had a couple first generation of a different make and model that we probably wouldn't have recommended, but they, they weren't in the running this round.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, does this one have the leaf blower on it, not blower, the leaf sucker?
Nope, this is strictly a.
Strictly a dumpster or garbage.
Strictly a rubbish truck. We've outfitted a couple of the outgoing ones that came offline into leaf vacuums out of the stormwater utility, but this would be an actual garbage truck.
Okay, very good.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10G, action on 2021-2022 retail alcohol license renewal. Chris. Okay, does anybody have any concerns about the alcohol license renewals?
That was approved at Public Works. Did everybody meet their terms, Madam Clerk? You had a couple of questions on one. Were those taken care of?
These are all taken care of. There'll be 10 more coming in the month of June.
I just have a question. I didn't see Aloft on this list. Are they coming in, or are they no longer having a bar in their facility, or did I totally miss it on there?
They have a different name.
They're on there? They are on there? Okay.
They have a different name.
Yeah.
They're now G. GB.
GB Wisconsin Associates. On the top of page two, and then it says DBA Aloft Hotel.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
Are we good there?
Yep.
We're good, okay, all right. I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license as long as everything is paid in full to the village, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10H, consider or discuss act on ordinance 05-2-2021, creating section 2-3-539, village manager, chapter 2, administration, article 3, officers and employees of the Village of Ashwabnan Municipal Code. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, as described in the agenda item, this particular proposed ordinance creates a section within chapter 2 of the municipal code establishing the position of village manager. In review of our existing code, it was found that we do not have an established position within code identifying the position of village manager. This, in fact, was an item recommended by public administration associates back in 2009 as part of an organizational audit, and for whatever reason, just wasn't completed. So the proposed ordinance that you have before you obviously reflects the duties and responsibilities of the village manager. It is in concert to section 2-1-20, which establishes the position of village president. It should be noted that under Home Rule Authority, Ashwabnan has what one would consider kind of a strong village president position, and so this proposed ordinance would be in concert to that. It would not take away or create a conflict in duties and responsibilities between the two positions. Ultimately, it is a boilerplate template ordinance related to that type of position with subtle changes to make it in concert with the village president. It should also be noted that this ordinance does not qualify to represent a change in governance structure. Under Wisconsin State Statutes, Chapter 64.15, under the village manager plan, you would have to go through a formal charter ordinance amendment, as well as a referendum in order to follow that plan. This is not that case. The village manager performs more an administrative function and does not play a significant role in the governance of the community like a true village manager plan would. It's a matter of semantics as to the title of the position, and so under Home Rule Authority, the village certainly has the ability to title my position village manager without the authorities found under 64.15. This was reviewed by committee and was recommended for approval back on the 18th of May. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Anybody have questions? Gary, do you have questions?
Yeah, Joel, you said this was not brought in front of us since when?
Probably weeks ago.
Yeah, a few years ago. 2009 was when the audit was completed.
Nine is what I'm looking at, is that correct?
That is when the audit was completed, and I'm not sure, for whatever reason, it wasn't brought forward, but it was something that was recommended as early as 2009.
Were you the one that caught it?
No, that was something that was brought forward to me. I think Mary had brought it to my attention when I first started.
Okay, okay, okay.
If there's no other discussion, I will make a motion to approve ordinance 05-2-2021, creating section 2-3-539, village manager, chapter 2, administration, article 3, officers and employees of the Village of Ashwabnan Municipal Code.
What says?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 05-2-2021, and I'm stopping there. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. 10I, strategic plan update.
Joel.
I did want to present to you just a brief update on our strategic plan. In your packet is an outline for our strategic plans, mission, core values, vision statement, our strategic goals or directives, as we're calling them, and then some key objectives. Based on tonight's attendance, I won't go into too much detail on the plan, but do plan on presenting a more thorough presentation, maybe in June, when some of, some of the other trustees can be present. But with that being said, obviously, the board has been working with staff over the course of the last several months to develop these key components to a strategic plan. We've met over a period of four individual workshops and have really kind of deliberated on what we feel is going to be the best representation of what our mission, values, and vision are for the community. In your packet, included in the attachment that the board is not necessarily completely familiar with, is the concept of key objectives. So the board has worked through four workshops to identify. So the board has worked through four workshops to identify what those goals are, but then within the goals, Department Head and, and myself, along with Mary, have developed some draft objectives that would fit within each of those goal statements. And so I'm presenting this to you tonight for your feedback. I recognize that this is your first opportunity to look at it, so I would encourage the board to, to read through those items, and if you have any strong feelings or thoughts about the validity of those key objectives, I would love to, to hear from you in the future on those. And then the next steps in the process, more or less, is to establish some very specific action items that would be attributed to each key objective. And so staff is now working on developing a list of items that would fit those key objectives, and those items can be found in our capital improvement plan, our overall operating budget, maybe our comprehensive plan, our bike and ped plan. So any of these current plans and studies that we have completed, we would begin to implement or include those as action items to be completed over the next one to five years. So with that, if the board has specific action items that they would like to accomplish, certainly forward those to my attention as well. And again, I'll bring this back in June, and hopefully we'll have the full board present, and we can kind of go through a more detailed discussion. So with that, I'll answer any questions or take any feedback.
I would suggest, Joe, if you're going to go through this in detail, we can save our questions till that time.
I potentially won't be here at the June meeting, so could I just give you a couple of comments? I went through it. On Directive number two, so it's to secure public health and safety, the question I have when the chief is here, what all falls, falls under what you would consider community policing? What does that all encompass, that term that you're using?
That's a pretty broad term.
I know.
Right?
That's what I'm asking.
So that's one of the things that we'll talk about as far as community policing, coordinating with our village residents, understanding what it is that they expect from us and what we can expect from them as well. But really, it's a partnership, and that's really what it's about. So those will be some of the things that we work out to try to figure out how we can enhance that partnership and move forward together.
All right. I was just wondering, because the other ones are really pretty specific, all the other ones that are mentioned there. My question is, where does traffic enforcement fall into this? And does it fall into this?
That's, as I've told.
It needs to be mentioned separately.
Yeah, as I've told everyone, that is probably the number one complaint that we get as law enforcement professionals, is it seems like we just never have enough people to enforce the traffic laws in every corner of the village. And so those are the things that we'll try to address as best we can. We use resources, we use speed signs, we use those types of things to gather data, try to find those hotspots, and try to give that extra attention, but we can't be everywhere at once, and that's one of the challenges that we have, for sure.
And I totally understand that. My question is, should it be listed as a separate item in there? Or is what we have listed enough to kind of insinuate that's part of your job? And I realize that is part of the job.
Yeah.
But it is an important aspect. You just said that we get a lot of comments on it. That's your biggest concern, you hear, should it be part of the.
It can be. I mean, we can certainly do that, it can be, but I can tell you, we address it on a daily basis.
Okay, then the other question on that same one is number four. Under there, it goes into, I gotta get back where it was. Lost my page, here we go. Enhance, key objective number four, enhance environmental sustainability and resiliency. What does that actually mean when it falls under that category? Because I can think of other things I could think of, but I don't, I'm trying to place it with public safety.
Yeah, well, what we wanted to look at here is the Strategic Directive of Public Health and Safety, and we looked at environmental sustainability and resiliency to be more of that health environment. So what are that flood mitigation issues? You know, one of the things we have identified is that although the built environment in Ashwabhanan has withheld or withstood against some of the environmental challenges that, that we've seen, particular high water levels in the Fox River and in the, in the Lakes region, we have been seeing an increase in flash flood events, and we want to make sure that we have the resiliency to handle those types of issues. So, yeah, it, it's kind of written more in the terms of kind of a broader goal base. So if, if there's a better idea of how to narrow that focus, we certainly would be willing to entertain that. That was an element, that objective itself, quite honestly, was not included in public health and safety, and we kind of just threw it out there to see if it would stick. So if, if the board and staff don't feel that, that there's enough gumption there, then maybe that's an item that gets removed.
Okay, yeah, I just wonder if it's placed in the right spot, I guess. Maybe it's more Public Works because they would handle, and I realize public safety will be out there as well, but Public Works would take care of a lot of the environmental-type things that may occur, more so than public safety being the primary on it, I guess I would say. All right, then Directive number three. For the key objective, in all the other ones, we have the word effectively maintain as well. And key objective number one, it just says improve our roads and highways, pedestrian, bike, and transportation infrastructure. Should we put in there effectively maintain as well? It seems, you know, we have a lot of roads that we redo or take care of. It just seems like it's missing from that objective. And one more, and then I will quit. Direct, under Directive number four, so support community and economic development, maybe looking at adding another objective that better encompass our existing residential development. We talk a lot about the commercial, we talk about the new residential development, but we don't have a lot in here in regard to taking care of our existing residential. And that was it. Thank you for taking my comments. Thanks, Ma.
Any other questions?
About it this time.
Okay, we'll get them at the June meeting for that one. Okay, ten J, consider discuss act on step three appeal of Ashwabhanan Public Safety grievance. Our legal department received a email today, and I will let Tony discuss that.
Just to follow up, the Ashwabhanan Public Safety Union has filed a grievance that's made its way through the procedural steps, first going to the chief, then to the village manager, and thereafter has appealed to the board. Based upon the contractual language in the collective bargaining agreement, it indicates that the board is to make at least some form of a decision with, within fifteen days of that request, so that we place this matter on the agenda for tonight. Subsequent to that, late last week, we received a request from the union to adjourn this meeting until, or I'm sorry, adjourn the grievance until next month's meeting as a result of some scheduling conflicts that they had where they wanted everyone to be here. So they are making that request tonight to the board, and as I had indicated to them, based upon the contractual language, that's the decision the board is in the position to have to make, that determination on whether to adjourn to next month. And so that's what's before you tonight. Otherwise, the alternative would be to proceed forward.
And as you said, as stated, there's no objection from administration?
That's correct.
And there's no concern on the unions, and obviously, they're requesting that. Well, and it will not have a problem on our end that we've pushed it off and not taken care of it in the required amount of time.
And if the, if the board were to determine tonight that they were in agreement with adjourning this to next month's meeting, I would simply memorialize that decision consistent with the collective bargaining agreements language in a letter to them, and then we would put it on next month's agenda.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to postpone. Is that what it is?
It's tabled to next month's.
To table the next month's Village Board meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this item to the June Village Board meeting. Any more comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number eleven, Code of Ethics, Annual Distribution of Public Officials and Employees Code of Ethics. Everybody has received a copy of these. Please take home, bedtime reading. Number twelve, items for next agenda. If you have any, please let us know. Call the office. Number thirteen, closed session items. During the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabhanan may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section one nine point eight five, parent one, parent G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel with respect to Ashwabhanan Public Safety Employee Litigation and Personnel Grievance Matters in which it is, is or likely to become involved. The Village Board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section nineteen point eight five, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
To, to clarify that declaration that we will be entering into closed session only to speak and discuss on the public safety employee litigation matter and not the grievance matter that was presented previously that has now been tabled or postponed, just for clarity.
Okay. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
President Kardasky?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session.
We're going out in the conference room.
Yeah.
This conference is no longer being recorded.